It's on page thirty-six of this magazine. "To be clear, the fiscal officer does not physically have to take or type the minutes of the meeting, but he or she is responsible for maintaining the records of all board meetings according to a revised code 507.04F." That's what I'm talking about. And there's more details. And it also tells you what should be included. Also mentions about recordings and any notes you guys take and all that kind of stuff. It's all a matter of public record. It goes through all of this whole article.
Okay, Ms. Edwards, would you be willing to, if we change our policy where we just did a check, so you're sitting in a meeting, you know who said what, you have a copy, you're making a copy of the audio, would you have a problem with making the short version then?
I would.
Would you? Okay.
Because I got enough to do out of there. So it's gonna be out of, you guys remember, my position is part-time.
Yeah.
So I'm spending more part-time already on doing this, trying to keep this township afloat. So if you want me to back up on some other stuff, I mean, deals aren't gonna get paid. I mean, I can't monitor all the stuff you've asked me over the years. I will have a problem doing that. Now, if you decide then that's gonna be a lack of something else that you just are just gonna criticize that I can't get done. And I want you to realize that. I can't do everything. Nobody can do everything. It needs to, there's some help there, and this needs to have help. We hired an administrative assistant to do, that was in the job description that got rewritten, to write the minutes. Then she was instructed to write them word-for-word, and then it got taken up too much of her time. And when we first hired our first administrative assistant, they never wrote those word-for-word. And then she got, this new administrative assistant got instructed to write them word, type them word-for-word. And I can see there's a problem with that. And I, you know, I asked her, I physically asked her, why are you typing these word-for-word? She said, "I was instructed to do that, and I left it alone. It was me stepping out of it. If it goes down by the trustees, there's nothing that I can do about it." And now it's out of her job description and nobody's doing it. It was taken out of her job description, but nobody made it a point to make somebody do it, or have somebody do it. I apologize, ma'am. Have somebody do it. It was just an assumption on who was going to do it.
Listen, will we sit in every meeting, you're gonna do it, you're gonna volunteer? You gonna have time in your day to step up and do that? Just ask them.
You know that I can't. Seventy hours plus a week, I cannot take on more duties, and it was not a duty to start with.
Okay, just ask them. Well, let's think about that. We need to look at the answer on that, because we gotta get caught, we were behind, we got caught up, we're behind again, we gotta get caught up. But I think we need to just do the short version, and there's other ways to figure it out if you, as I said, if there's something in that short version, I wanna know more about that on, on the website, there's the audio recording, listen.
So, again, we put this off and pushed it, pushed it, pushed it, it's gonna be the end of the year, and we're gonna have no minutes left. So it's gotta be, we can think about it, I agree. I don't see any problem to think about, but we gotta think about it fast. And now July, we're more than halfway through the year. And yet, granted, we didn't have two days a month, but they're gonna add up.
All right, why don't we do this? There's four of us here. We've got, what, a few more months. So why don't we split it up and take the minutes to the end of the year, and then at that point, we then have to decide what we're gonna do with these. Are you all for that? So really, you only have to take care of this a couple of times until the end of the year each person. Comments?
I count ten meetings.
That we already have?
Yeah.
It's not counting the budget meetings. We've still got zoning meetings to transcribe.
Those are some of our meetings right here.
Well, we still have, those are, we're still here.
He was talking about us, four of us here dealing with this meeting, I didn't.
How many zoning meetings have we got recorded? Because I haven't posted any of the zoning meetings on the website. And they should be there. If I read this article, it should be in there. And I don't know whether, and I don't know who keeps on hold of those recordings of the seminars zoning director does. So I have big given. I may have one because it was on the recorder, because he did draw the recorder one time, so I may have one of those on one of them. And whatever you gotta do.
Well, okay, so, um, we have two in March, okay, February, the program has started, uh, like, March, the second week of March.
Seventeenth or something like that.
Something like that. The second meeting, we had that seventeenth meeting, didn't we? Yeah. So, what if I do January, where are you gonna do February? And Jim, we do March?
I can tell you I already did, uh.
Huh?
I can tell you I already did January.
Okay, then, I'll do February and March, and we'll do it that way, and we gotta do something. We can't just sit here and let it go, go, go.
And I did the brief version, not the word-for-word.
I'm gonna do the brief version, I'll do February, I'll do the two meetings in February. Do you want to volunteer for the two meetings in March?
Okay.
All right. Okay, so then April and May, one meeting, or Jim, we do April and May. And then how about Tracy, June and July? That gets, that gets us caught up, working as a team, gets us caught up.
Okay, keep going to the end of the year.
Well, we don't know whether we're gonna have one or two meetings, I mean, uh.
Well, just sign that person the whole month.
Okay, so then July, then we'll rotate again, so August will be me, September would be you, October would be Jim, Tracy would be November, and I'd get a two Friday, just then I'd get December.
And you won't have to do that till January.
So I'm gonna.
All right, I'll take January.
December's gonna be bad.
Why is that?
Because we have closed-out meetings and budget meetings. And, and November may be too.
So I got August, February, August, December.
If somebody runs a problem, they ask for some help.
I'm sorry?
I said, if someone has a problem, they ask for some help.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so do we need, we're gonna later need a resolution for this as well. Your verbal is fine.
Verbal's fine, do you?
Um, I mean, in the meeting.
Yeah, in the meeting, verbal's fine, maybe it is.
Again, read this article, because it tells you what you need to include, basically, what you need to include in those minutes. So it has to be the basis that we have to include in those minutes. Um, okay. Um, I think, I think that's all the holes didn't.
Trustees, we need to move on here, we've got Choice One here, wants to.
Is this gonna be in the regular meeting or?
The regular meeting, okay. Did you hear that? I'm sorry, I was.
I did too. No way, it's not even put in here anymore.
Well, not only agenda, so I can know that, okay. This one.
All right. I don't know if you wanna.
I can, I can preference it.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so trustees and fiscal officer, we're receiving an email from the state Ohio PWC, Public Works Commission. When you applied for your, in the round thirty-four back in nineteen, for issue two funding for, uh, Phase One and Phase Two of Derby Road, you did not get funded in that phase last year. Because of COVID and other financial reasons, many of the cities and town, and townships that did receive funding have either reduced their scope of work, canceled their projects, or their bids came in under because contractors are finding hard places to work, so they're giving lower prices on the work. That being said, Donna Kirkbride, the director of the Issue Two program, sent an email to the township saying that Jefferson is now funded off of the Round Thirty-four program in two thousand and nineteen. So we, basically, the money scaled down the ladder, and now we have it available to you. So I asked Kay to come today just to be able to refresh your memory about those projects. And the state is wanting an immediate answer of yes, no. No application yet, correct?
No application, how do you mean?
Needed to be filled out tonight.
No, no.
But do you want to proceed with this possibility? As I was hired three and a half, four years ago, I, the first thing I told all of you is that this community had never officially filed for their own Issue Two. That means the money that could have been fixing your roads for multiple years were going to other communities possibly, because you never filed an application. And that was one of the first things I said to all of you in many meetings in the community as well as in here, we have to apply. You have now been awarded, if you wanted, your very first Issue Two money. And so Kay has some of the financials with her. Last year, you did pass resolution, nineteen, two resolutions. You hired Choice One to, to prepare the application at nineteen oh four-two, and then you submitted the application to the state under Resolution nineteen dash oh seven-five. Um, in recent weeks, you, you went forward with an issue, with a two thousand and twenty road repair program. It included patchwork in each of those two areas. The award that you're eligible for is Phase Two, which goes from Infirmary Road East to about two thousand feet east of Kimmel Road. And it's a complete rebuild of the roadway, not patchwork. That's the bridge at the bottom of the hill, the entryway into Tucson, the entryway into Kimmel, and all the major under, infrastructure problems that we have, because we have drainage tile that have failed under that roadway. You also have a storm sewer at the corner of Tucson and Derby that is failed, and the, the trench box cannot keep the, the wrought iron lid in it anymore because of cars and trucks that have driven over it. Those problems would all be fixed if you pursued and went forward with this possible Issue Two project for Derby. Now, Kay will get into specifics of what those patchworks do for this project, but Donna Kirkbride assured me, as maybe, and I had, um, Choice One call her as well, the projects do not have to start till possibly middle to the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Payment toward the project will be starting in around two thousand and twenty-two. So even though you approved the two thousand and twenty repair projects that are going on now, you have time to encumber the down payment, or the payment that's cashed, that has to come from the community. CDBG, as of today, have an application in for the same amount of money that we applied for and got last year. So CDBG has put the application in, and it looks like we're gonna be approved. So you're not any higher in value, we don't believe, until it's bid. Um, and I'm gonna turn this over to you, Kay, at this point, because the bidding process and things that, that's why they hired Choice One to work for you, and I don't wanna steal your thunder or your information.
So before, go ahead, but I want you to also be aware of something else after she's done, because there's some more things that's still left out. And so go ahead.
First, I'm gonna hand you a packet of paper.
Thank you.
Um, and I'll just explain what each of these are. Um, the first document you have there is the application that's stapled separately. That's what was submitted to the Ohio Public Works Commission last August. That is the details of the finances of the project, um, the descriptions of the project, uh, the initial schedule that was planned that cannot be pushed back, and some other information, as well as forms you guys signed, the resolutions, uh, the actual estimate, et cetera. Um, also the commitment letter from CDEG, signed by Ms. Jones, track accounts, and all those certified. You go to the second page after the staple, and it'll look like this. This is the, a, a basic finance of what the project costs. Total project four twelve, uh, oh three eight. Um, you guys didn't provide local in-kind work, meaning I think, um, the plan was to maybe try and ask Paul, um, do any of the work that the township employees could do, and that would, um, qualify as a, a match. There was gonna be about forty-one thousand three hundred and four dollars in local cash, the CDBG grant. And then you have, you can be awarded, if you so choose, the OPWC grant of one forty-six eight fifteen and the OPWC loan of one forty-six eight fifteen, same amounts for each. Uh, that makes the local total with the loan, the in-kind, and the cash to two twenty-nine, two twenty-two, three. The loan would be twenty years, zero percent interest, and so it gets paid biannually, uh, at about thirty-six thousand, or, not thirty-six, excuse me, three thousand six, six hundred and seventy dollars, uh, payments due in January and July. That's just kind of a recap of the finances of the project and how it would work with OPWC. The next page that has an orange hi, orange highlight, has a big draft watermark on it. What this is, is this is the, uh, Round Thirty-four projects here in District Four, which is Montgomery County. Uh, initially, the first sixteen were going to be funded. We see a line there under Lynn Hayden and Meyer. Um, the district, based on their allocation, funded that many project, planned to fund that many projects back in late November. Um, since then, as Steve mentioned, um, there were some projects not going forward. There was also a lot of, um, projects that came in under the estimate, so money is then returned to the district, and therefore, the OPWC is working its way down to Jefferson Township, project number twenty-one. Uh, and that funding is available, as I outlined, uh, in the last sheet. So it's just to give you an idea, um, where the project fell and why it's being funded now and wasn't previously. Um, and then the next document, so what, what's, what's happening? OPWC Round Thirty-four has gotten really strange because of the COVID. Uh, the money for Round Thirty-four, it comes through government bonds and the gas tax. The money is set aside for Ohio Public Works, it's a hundred and seventy-five million statewide. However, the, um, state government has to physically appropriate, appropriate that money. So the money exists, but it hasn't been appropriated yet. So the state has waited, um, to redo, redo the state budget for, for reasons. The state budget is not passed like it normally is, so the money, although it's there for OPWC, has not been appropriated, so OPWC can't release the funds. The governor received a bill, an emergency bill last week. Um, if he signs it, and we're all hoping he does, this funding will proceed forward. So if it happens, when it happens, crossing our measures, um, agreements will be mailed out to the communities that have received funding. They are able to execute, execute those agreements, and projects can proceed forward, um, at this point. Um, if you wanted to, if you accepted the money, you could start construction tomorrow, and it would be, um, it, it would be valid. The construction could be paid for with OPWC. However, because of COVID and because of this delay, and the process of being a B C N S that, uh, you are welcome to wait, um, until next year, and so they're being flexible, because they understand this is strange times, and, uh, their schedule is off. So what would happen if, what Donna Kirkbride, OPWC needs now is that the answer, yes or no, the township would like to proceed with the project, or no, in which case they'll go down their list and they'll offer the money to someone else. Um, if the township decides to proceed with the project, I included what the agreement would look like. It would get emailed, I believe, to Steve. Um, it would get executed based on, uh, the signatures you see, you'll see in there. And then the project could proceed with design, engineering, um, bidding, and construction. This is a sample. Uh, the actual township agreement, um, would be similar to this. I had to pull a sample up because yours isn't available yet. Um, but it's just to give you an idea of what it would look like. Um, it's just, I honestly never read it. Um, but it, just to give you an idea of what that will look like if you proceed with the project. Um, just as reference, and then the last document is the auditor's document from OPWC that talks about Paiute, how the, um, how the fiscal officer would need to set up the accounts to pay for, um, the project. Just as reference. So the question is whether or not you want to proceed with the funding. Um, as we estimated last year, the, the project is four hundred and twelve thousand thirty-eight dollars. Um, and based on that single sheet with the blue top that says Derby Two, um, that's how the funding would break out. The township would need, uh, forty-one thousand in local cash as the contractor completes the work. So you would not owe anything until, uh, to the contractor until that's done. Um, that would, it, as the, excuse me, at the engineering and the contracting is done, uh, the actual construction is done, is when you would owe that cash. So it would not be like a one-time payment necessarily. Um, OPWC pays a grant in wonder directly to the, the vendor, either be at the engineering firm or the contractor. Um, and then the loan payments would kick in, uh, I believe, the year after construction is finished. Um, just to kind of give you an idea of how that all works out. Um, so I'm here tonight to answer any questions you have about accepting this grant. As Steve mentioned, it's the first time that Jefferson Township has been awarded a grant, so that's very exciting, but, you know, we also acknowledge that, you know, that you weren't planning on this, uh, because we didn't think you were awarded. I think we got the email last Thursday or something, uh, from Donna, or Steve received it from Donna, uh, saying that the project could now be funded. Um, so like Steve said, it's, it's important to get an answer to Donna soon, because, uh, they wanna issue these agreements as soon as the governor signs that bill, hopefully in the next couple of days. Um, so I'm happy to answer questions, um, on what this process would look like. To be honest, right now, if it was engineered now, we did it out now, we're seeing very competitive prices right now, because contractors are uncertain about where construction's gonna be next year, so we're getting, uh, we just spent on a project in Fairborn. It was a larger project, about two point four million, and it came in right at two million, so it was considerably under the estimate. So right now, uh, bidding projects has been, um, good. Um, if the project was, uh, es, continued to be estimated at four twelve, let's say the contractor, um, came in at four hundred thousand, based on some of the improvements you've made from this year, uh, the money you've spent this year, if some of the items, uh, initially in the project were non-performed, you could do a change order and reduce the cost of the, the project overall. So that's how, um, any improvements you've done this year with your road improvement program would factor into this. It would either be non-designed and therefore not built, and, uh, the money just wouldn't be to be spent. Or if it was designed and non-performed, you could do a change order, reduce the amount of the construction contract at the end, and not have to pay that.
So can I say something? That, that part, Kimmel, between Kimmel and Infirmary Road, most of that road, I just built yesterday, has been repaired. We got a bill to, to deck for that. Um, for that part was all the whole Derby Road, but we got a bill for that, that they've done so far to that. So you're saying that part won't be tore up after they already done it, or what are you saying?
Sure. So that's the, the timing of this is just how it happened, um, because we just got information that the, um, because you bring up a good point. Um, the timing of this is maybe less than ideal, because you guys just improved that thinking it wasn't gonna get improved. Um, what we would do, uh, what we would do is have our engineers go out and look at it and say, okay, now that this has been repaired, what can we save, what will still need re, you know, redone? It would, it would be engineered to work with those repairs. I don't know anything about the repairs, if they were full-depth, if it was a grinded overlay, so, uh, it would just depend. Um, if less work could be performed because of those, um, then we just either wouldn't design it, and the overall project would cost less. And any money that's not spent, um, you, you spend your grant first, you, then you spend the loan, um, so you would owe less overall at the end.
You proved a hunk of change on that, I'm gonna put it out, you proved a hunk of change in that one.
For the one that's done already?
Yeah.
I haven't, I didn't see any approval for, um, for what they did. I just know if you hired a company to do it, there was no actual approval of them now. If anybody has a resolution or something, I didn't see it. Do you, do you know there was, Steve?
There was a resolution that trustees passed to start the program with January construction, and, and they're gonna address that in a regular meeting tonight. Um, Kay, I have a couple of questions for the trustees and the fiscal officer. Um, when they put their proposal with your help last year together, there was a fifty percent loan, fifty percent cash. Um, and the loan was, if I remember right, was at zero interest?
Yes, twenty years.
Is there any way to restructure the entire cash amount and add it to the loan at zero interest and still be eligible for this project?
That is a great question. I don't know. That would be a question I'd have to ask OPWC.
Okay. And what I'm thinking here, trustees and fiscal officer, because, you know, cash flow is always king here. You stretch, if you get a zero interest loan, you're never gonna get that in the lifetime of the township. You're never gonna get possibly another Issue Two loan of this, or this project amount. So you have to look at possibly refinancing the package if you can, and to make it happen. But I'm not saying you can, or, or, there's a lot of variables, as Kay has just explained to you, but you have to dig into this now. We've only, I've only had four or five days to dig into this thing and figure out what to present to you guys. We've been to notice, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry, I was just gonna comment on your suggestion. One thing, um, so the local cash amount, the forty-one thousand two hundred and four, that was based on ten percent of the project, and so you scored a certain amount of points because you were gonna, um, commit forty-one thousand in cash. If you would restructure it as part of the loan, had we scored all these again, it would lower, it would have lowered your score. So technically, you would have been lower on the list had, now, maybe they'll allow you to do it. I'm not saying that's a no, I'm just, that might be one way to think about it.
Could you ask Dr. Brian Fainley, in the name of the township, for us?
Uh, absolutely.
Well, I guess my, my thing was, can you find out what the best way for us to do, now that you know the whole situation? Do you understand what I'm saying? As far as what's the best, best way for us not to be moved down a little, if that would happen?
Right, if there's some other way.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, I understand, I'll.
Kay, what form do you need the yes? You need a simple letter signed by the trustees?
It could be a response from Steve to Donna that says, yes, please proceed. There's no, I don't think there needs to be anything format, um, beyond that.
I have another question you don't mind asking, for trustees and fiscal officer. If they would say yes soon, what, tonight, another date, whatever, they say yes? And then the numbers and the bid process come in too high. What are the options for the township? Just reject or, you know, turn back the, the process, Kay, or?
So when you say the numbers come in too high, um, if it's over ten percent of the estimate, um, you're not allowed to award it, so that, at that point.
So it's automatic trigger, not to award?
Correct, correct.
Or we have a penalty for doing that?
Uh, no, that happens pretty frequently. Um, what happens in those situations is either the, um, the community will choose to make the project smaller, therefore keeping the bid and then rebid it, or, um, I, I don't know what would happen if, at that point, if the, uh, community chose not to proceed with the project at all, the money would probably go back to OPWC and be used in future rounds for other communities. But if it comes in ten percent over the estimate, uh, you, it's, it's not awarded.
Do you know in your history of the company and community that turned back and was penalized by any reason for taking, not taking the money?
Um, I don't know of a situation where it came in over bid and then they turned it back in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm only aware of ones where they've lessened the scope and rebid it, uh, for a lesser amount. Um, I think in today's circumstances, I think OPWC is gonna be very, very flexible, because they understand, number one, that their schedule is very odd this year, uh, and number two, that you guys are dealing with lots of fiscal issues that maybe haven't been present in past years, so I think they're trying to be as flexible as possible. Um, OPWC likes it when folks take the money, but, um, they also are pretty flexible with how that works, so. I have an experience too, but.
I appreciate those, those answers. So trustees, I, I'm sorry we didn't have much notice on this, but that's the way the state is moving. Since COVID started to slowly open up, everyone's gone from a, a waltz or a sitting in a chair to a fast-speed sprint. And, um, regardless whether you hold another meeting this month or you go to the next month. month, you're going to have to have some kind of special meeting prior to that to make a decision. I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting that you have to, because you either say a yes or a no to this offer, and you have to have a legal vote to do that. You have to be on record to say yes or no. Uh, but at the same time, you've heard Kay's synopsis, my synopsis of what I explained, if, if you get into this thing and find out, you know, that you can't do it, they're, they're, you're not penalized.
No, there would be no penalty for turning back the money at this point.
But they're also in a movement to move quick with these existing, because they wanted to do two thousand and twenties grant program, and they can't get that off the table till they know they've wrapped up nineteen. So you have a short win, the trustees and fiscal officers are big in this, Tracy, I mess up, but you're big in this.
I understand this, Steve, you're going over our time, you're going over something that, that needs to be explained, though. I don't think you're going over too much. I think we need to stop here, and just go ahead and get Kay to do what we asked her to do, in my opinion, and then get back to us, or if you guys want to vote tonight, and we do that, and then we get that information from her. So I understand, and I thank you, Steve, for all that information.
You're welcome. Thank you, Kay.
And I'm happy to answer questions at later time.
Move to a chair.
Second, with your against seven oh four.